We're with Channel 8, keeping you informed on events in your community.
I'd ask that everybody please silence or turn off your cellphones in preparation for the meeting. Please.
Do we have internet in here now?
Karen Adams.
Here.
Joseph Demott.
Here.
Karen Berry.
Here.
Joyce J.
Here.
Davis Reinhardt.
Here.
Wanda Sang.
Here.
Mike Stites.
Here.
And Councilmember Langworthy is absent this evening. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of October 11, 2010?
No.
Second.
They have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Stites, discussion on the motion to approve. Please poll the council. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. We have one ceremony tonight. I would ask Livewell Wheat Ridge to step forward, Molly Hansen and a few folks from the PD, Chief Brennan and some of your staff, for a presentation.
Hi. Nice to see you all. Hello. Hi, my name is Molly Hansen. I am the Livewell Wheat Ridge Coordinator. We want to thank the mayor and the city council for this opportunity to recognize the Wheat Ridge Police Department for their partnership and commitment to support a healthy and safe Wheat Ridge. I'm joined by Greg Seabert, and he's a member of our leadership committee, and I'm joined by Scott Shields, a member of our leadership committee also. So I'm going to say a few words, and then we're going to call each of you up. Okay. So, very briefly, public health practitioners, healthcare providers, researchers and educators are all in agreement that a vital ingredient to creating healthy communities to combat the obesity epidemic is to create safer communities. Our older adults, members of our community with disabilities, families with children, may not engage in healthy activities like walking or biking to school, taking advantage of our parks and trails, or garden in our communities if they don't feel safe. In fact, there is such a strong tie between perceived safety and health behavior that the Center of Disease Control prioritizes eliminating vacant lots and buildings and creating safe routes to school to reduce and prevent obesity. It's a privilege to work with the city, staff, elected officials, and the police department that understands this link and commits resources to this endeavor. It's our pleasure to recognize the entire Wheat Ridge Police Department for creating safe and healthy neighborhoods in Wheat Ridge. So we'd like to introduce and recognize each of the officers specifically.
I'd like to recognize Officer Heather Kendall. Officer Kendall is a strong advocate for safety. Officer Kendall coordinates all the bike rodeos for the Wheat Ridge Elementary Schools. A favorite for the children, parents, and school administrators, these bike rodeos teach young children key bike safety strategies and the importance of wearing a helmet at all times, requiring a lot of coordination with schools, parents, and community volunteers. Officer Kendall, attention to detail and energy, patience, makes her a great person to partner with the schools on these projects. Thank you, Officer Kendall, for all the hard work in implementing the bike rodeos in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to recognize Sergeant Paula Balafas? Sorry.
She's on vacation.
She's on vacation. Well, we should still read about her, right? So she's not here to hear me butcher her name, so that's good. Sergeant Paula Balafas was the first Wheat Ridge Crime Prevention Team Sergeant. She worked proactively in bringing many of the initial crime prevention programs to the Wheat Ridge community. Additionally, she worked on the original partnership with Livewell Wheat Ridge to launch the volunteer Walk and Watch program. This innovative program brings the principles of neighborhood watch to the streets, parks, green belts, and trails in Wheat Ridge. This one-of-a-kind program combines crime prevention and community fitness. Thank you, Sergeant Balafas, for your leadership and vision on the Walk and Watch program.
Officer Betsy Saylor has now stepped into the role of coordinating the Walk and Watch. Wheat Ridge Police Department has adopted this program this year and is now under the care and direction of Officer Saylor. She recruits new members and conducts training and coordination of the volunteers. Currently, there are 50 volunteers participating in the Walk and Watch program. So we thank Officer Saylor for doing this. Thank you.
I'd like to now recognize Detective Kyle Eversole. Detective Kyle Eversole assisted with the Walk and Watch instruction and continuing the program when Sergeant Balafas left the Crime Prevention Office. Additionally, Detective Eversole was a key staff member on the East Wheat Ridge Neighborhoods Project. For example, he planned and scheduled the meetings. He was also the main meeting facilitator. Detective Eversole also assisted with bike rodeos and has supported multiple crime prevention programs over the last several years. Thank you, Detective Eversole, for your energy, vision, and commitment to safe and healthy neighborhoods.
I'd like to recognize Lieutenant Wade Hammond, who I've had the pleasure of working with in various committees. Lieutenant Hammond is a leader in bringing funding and partners together for the successful implementation of the East Wheat Ridge Neighborhood Project. This project works to reduce crime, increase equality of life, revitalize neighborhoods, and create healthier communities. Key strategies include conducting community meetings, increasing patrol in certain neighborhoods, supporting information for the community residents who live in the eastern portion of our community. Additionally, Lieutenant Hammond is a member of the Wheat Ridge Active Community Residence Task Force. He's also served in a small steering committee that helped Livewell Wheat Ridge and Jeffco Public Schools implement a successful Walk to School Day this year. Lieutenant Hammond is an amazing advocate for creating healthy and safe neighborhoods. He understands the key strategies to play and work to increase our partnership on many levels. Thank you, Lieutenant Hammond.
And finally, we'd like to thank Chief Daniel Brennan, Chief of Police. We'd like to thank Chief Brennan for his leadership and commitment to partnerships that support healthy and safe neighborhoods. Molly Hansen, the Livewell Wheat Ridge Coordinator remembers meeting Chief Brennan on one of her first days on the job. She said, "I have this idea to create an active community environments task force, and I think the police department is a key partner on making Wheat Ridge a healthy community." Chief Brennan kindly handed her his business card and said, "Contact me when you pull this group together." She did, and here we are today. Livewell Wheat Ridge would like to extend our deep appreciation to Chief Brennan for supporting his staff to partner on all these efforts. Your vision and leadership is tremendously valued. Thank you, Chief Brennan.
Mayor and City Council, if I could just take the opportunity to say just a couple of things. First of all, it's always beneficial, and it's a pleasure to work with a willing community partner. We certainly have had that, both with Livewell Wheat Ridge, and Scott represents Family Tree. We've had a lot of interaction on different projects together and different ideas. So if you have that sort of community, partnership, and that willingness to collaborate, I think that you can make the change that you need to make in the community and engage the citizens in the community to improve the quality of life, crime issues, and the traffic issues that you have. But I couldn't, and I wouldn't be up here today if it wasn't for my valued staff. Although I appreciate the fact that, you know, they've recognized me for my vision and leadership, none of that would be possible without, you know, the commitment of 72 sworn employees and 30 non-sworn employees in this department. I don't come up with these good ideas, they do. And, you know, we've given them the, empowered them to make change, to collaborate with the community, and do different things. And I couldn't do it without them. I really think that the congratulations goes to them, and I appreciate their work, their perseverance, and their dedication to the job that they do. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and congratulations. The next item on the agenda is citizens' right to speak. It's reserved for members of the public who wish to speak on any item not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed three minutes. Others may donate their time to the speaker at the podium for a total of nine minutes. When you are speaking at the podium, you will see a yellow light when you have 30 seconds left, a red light when your time is up. So please step forward to speak on anything not on the agenda tonight at the podium. And please spell your last name for the record.
Hello, my name is Jesse Hill, H-I-L-L. I'm a citizen of Wheat Ridge, and I'm here today to voice my disappointment in the handling of Wheat Ridge Ballot Initiative 2A, the franchising of trash services. It's my first time, actually, here at City Council today, but I'd rather be here for praise, but the attitude, I guess, shown by the council that believes and knows better than the citizens on how to select their trash services, well, that's embarrassing. One year ago, I chose to move here, Wheat Ridge, versus the city of Denver and other cities, just for freedom such as the freedom to fire my trash service provider out there. And according to this ballot initiative, I might not have that freedom anymore. And, I don't know, with the posting, actually, of this ballot initiative with less than 16 business days out there before the election, it makes it near impossible to really educate the citizens about this unnecessary power grab. Probably most, though, disappointed that the council would attempt to buy the votes of our vulnerable seniors out there, essentially almost pitting one class against another so they'd have the ability and power to manipulate the private businesses on how they see fit to do their business. That's unnecessary, as I see. And with only one public hearing, a town hall meeting that was held with a skewed survey that was given, and it gives really an impression out there that this is really being pushed down from the top down on the citizens. A citizen granting monopoly of trash services is not the answer to our problems, and it really should only be used as a last resort out there. There's no doubt that this job, this ballot initiative is going to kill bills in the city and also is going to prevent any other future trash service provider from starting up. I ask the City Council to do the right thing here, and please recall ballot item 2A from the November 2, 2010 election. Thank you for your time, and please feel free to contact me with any questions afterwards. I will leave a card. Thank you.
Karen Thaler, T-H-A-L-E-R. I live at 6161 West 29th Place, District 1, in East Wheat Ridge. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and citizens of Wheat Ridge. I just wanted to make a quick community announcement, especially concerning East Wheat Ridge. Yesterday morning at 2:00 a.m., I had the unfortunate experience of watching a neighbor's cat get attacked and killed by a coyote. Yes, it was a coyote, and a big one at that. It's nothing new. We know they roam around. This is the third time in the last several years this has happened on this cul-de-sac. Very gruesome and necessary, just a reminder to citizens, keep your small pets inside dust to dawn, especially even small dogs. And two, this week, temperatures will be dipping rather cold, so be a responsible pet owner, and please take care of them. Thank you so much.
I'm Britta Fisher. That's F-I-S-H-E-R. I live at 39th and Harlan in District 2. I'm also the Executive Director of Wheat Ridge 2020, which is an organization that does community and economic development, serving this community. You may have seen some of our signs around town where we've been a partner in development, loans, grants for businesses, and homes throughout the community. Tonight, I wanted to remind citizens of some of the positions of Wheat Ridge 2020 as they fill out their ballots. One, we have some very damaging potential amendments and Proposition 101 that are before us as voters. Amendments 60, 61, and 101 would wreak havoc in our state, and there's certainly many impacts that we can't even foretell. For our business in economic development, we see there being serious impacts, and it could be very difficult to attract businesses and retain them here in our state as well as our community. Secondly, I wanted to address ballot issue 2A. Right now, we have trash trucks that are causing a lot of damage to our infrastructure. And so this ballot initiative would give City Council the ability to go for a franchise agreement or negotiate a franchise agreement. One of the things that has been brought up is the idea of monopoly. It does not have to be that way. Could break the city into different districts, have different companies serve different districts, and if that's something that we want as citizens, that's something that we should tell City Council while they're negotiating. One of the things that we've seen on streets like my own, we have a cul-de-sac. It has maybe 10 residential homes, and we had trash service six days a week when we moved into that cul-de-sac. And that causes a lot of damage, especially when a trash truck has the same impact as 1,300 cars. And that could save us, I believe Mr. Pronto was estimating even $100,000 each year just in street repairs alone. And that's a significant savings in a hard budget time, and so we ask citizens to consider that. We also know that about 41% of cities do include trash services in what they do, and while this would still give some freedom for private business to do that, it does make sense to make sure that our city has adequate trash and recycling service. Also, as a vibrant and sustainable community supporter, it's good to see recycling as a component that will hopefully encourage more people to recycle when it's included. I'd like to believe that as 17,000 households, we have a lot more negotiating power than as one individual household. So I ask voters to consider those matters as they're filling out their ballots and join us in advancing Wheat Ridge as a vibrant and sustainable place to live. Thanks.
Do we have anybody else to speak on anything not on the agenda for public comment? Staff or council has the opportunity to respond. Any comments? Can we move on to any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinances on first reading. Item one is Council Bill 17-2010. Councilmember Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill 17-2010, An Ordnance Repealing and Reenacting Section 1153 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning the Application of the State Liquor Laws Within the City. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 17-2010 on first reading. Order it published and set for a public hearing on November 8, 2010, at 7:00 p.m. in the City Council chambers, and that it take effect 15 days after publication.
Second.
We have a motion for approval on Council Bill 17-2010, seconded by Councilmember Sang. Please poll the council on first reading. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item two, Councilmember Reinhardt?
Item number two is a motion to accept the permanent easement from Beth Edin Centenary Baptist Church for a sidewalk along Wadsworth Boulevard. The city has applied for and has been awarded a Bike Pedestrian Federal Improvement Project grant through the Denver Regional Council of Government to fund the construction of a multi-use path on Wadsworth Boulevard between 26th Avenue and 32nd Avenue. Staff investigated the right-of-way along Wadsworth Boulevard for the purpose of the improvement and found the need for an easement from Beth Edin and Baptist Church to build the improvement. The easement has been negotiated in advance. The city is entering into contract with Colorado Department of Transportation to facilitate the project. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to accept the permanent easement from Beth Edin Centenary Baptist Church for the construction and maintenance of a sidewalk along Wadsworth Boulevard.
Is there a second? We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Jay, discussion on item two. Please poll the council. Motion carries seven to zero. Item three is Resolution 57-2010. Councilmember Berry?
Yes, thank you. Resolution 57-2010, a resolution approving a contract with the Colorado Department of Transportation for the construction of a multi-use path on Wadsworth Boulevard from 26th Avenue to 32nd Avenue. And Mr. Reinhardt already described that we had received a grant, and this intergovernmental agreement with CDOT is necessary to formally authorize the project and allow the design to commence. The IGA provides that the city pays 20% of the cost of the project with reimbursement of 80% of the cost, not to exceed $624,000. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution 57-2010, a resolution approving a contract with the Colorado Department of Transportation for a multi-use path on Wadsworth Boulevard from 26th to 32nd Avenue. Is there a second?
Second. We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Reinhardt. We have one person who wants to sign up to speak, Louise Turner?
Mr. Mayor and council, I have some questions that I hope will get answered during the discussion on this project. Number one is Wadsworth being widened, and if so, by how much? Some of you will remember, there has been tremendous discussions on this in the past. When the development to the north was approved, there was talk that perhaps as much as 20 feet would be required by the city to be taken off of that property for Wadsworth widening. There were people who questioned why the city officials wanted a wider street than the state recommended, and so forth. So I'd like to know if this is being widened, and if so, by how much? Also, if it is, what will it do to this property, this City Hall property? We're not too far from Wadsworth, out here on the east, on the west, and what will it do? What are the elevation differences? Just in short, what effect will it have? A lot of people cherish the fact that City Hall sits in a park-like atmosphere, and it is very nice with the feeling in the city and the character of the city, and they would like to know the difference this might possibly make. Why is it on your papers on the internet that the plan says this goes from 26th to 32nd on this side of the street and from 29th to 32nd on the other side of the street? Is that a typo, or is that true, and why? And next, are there going to be easements required? Are there going to be property purchases required? Are there likely to be condemnations? Do you have an agreement with the cemetery of some sort? There are just a lot of things that this is, can be a very far-reaching project, and as you know, there has been absolutely no information on it in the papers. We have two weekly papers, but nothing of the city plans ever seems to go into them. And I know you think that everybody has the internet and that everybody lives by it and they can find anything out, but some of these questions were given to me to ask by friends who do have the internet. And regardless of that, there is still a newspaper reading, public, mostly seniors, I guarantee, but they feel that the day begins with a newspaper and a cup of coffee, and old habits are hard to break. Those are my questions. I guess we could ask even further. As this goes north of 38th Avenue, there were a whole raft of questions connected with how a bike path could be used through an area of 12 feet wide with a curb on one side and a row of buildings on the other. All along the way, there have been questions raised about the widening of Wadsworth, and the taking of private commercial property was very much an issue up to the north. Now, maybe this doesn't all tie together, but it seems to me there was something on the agenda a number of weeks ago about a grant, a good-sized grant, two or three million, for this bike path all the way from 26th either to 44th or to the north city limits. I don't know. Is this a part of that same thing? Anyway, I hope some of these things will be answered during your discussions. Thank you.
Mr. Pronto, do you want to answer a few of the questions?
Yes, council. This project consists of constructing a sidewalk, and sidewalk-only, a 10-foot sidewalk that would be used as a multi-use trail. The sidewalk would be constructed on the east side of Wadsworth from 26th to 29th, and the easement you just accepted allows the area for that construction to be put in place. The sidewalk then would move across the street, or the trail would move to the west side of Wadsworth along the back of the right-of-way adjacent to the cemetery, where there is adequate right-of-way today. It will go to the north. There's a small, little bit of easement that needs to be acquired, and we're in the process of finalizing negotiations on the little triangular piece at the corner of 32nd and Wadsworth on the west side. This trail will then connect the trail along 32nd over to the county multi-use park to a very strategic 26th Avenue, which is both a bicycle and major pedestrian access for the local region. Be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
The question about widening? Has anything been?
There is no widening of Wadsworth associated with this project. Tim, does...
Now, maybe this doesn't all tie together, but it seems to me there was something on the agenda a number of weeks ago about a grant, good-sized grant, two or three million, for this bike path all the way from Twenty-Sixth either to Forty-fourth or to the North City Limits. I don't know. Is this a part of that same thing? Anyway, I hope some of these things will be answered during your discussions. Thank you.
Mr. Pronto, do you want to answer a few of the questions?
Yes, council. This project consists of constructing a sidewalk and sidewalk-only, a ten-foot sidewalk that would be used as a multi-use trail. The sidewalk would be constructed on the east side of Wadsworth from Twenty-Sixth to Twenty-Ninth. And the easement you just accepted allows the area for that construction to be put in place. The sidewalk then would move across the street, or the trail would move to the west side of Wadsworth along the back of the right-of-way adjacent to the cemetery where there is adequate right-of-way today. It will go to the north. There's a small little bit of easement that needs to be acquired, and we're in the process of finalizing negotiations on the little triangular piece at the corner of Thirty-second and Wadsworth on the west side. This trail will then connect the trail along Thirty-second over to the county multi-use park to a very strategic Twenty-Sixth Avenue, which is both a bicycle and major pedestrian access for the local region. Be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Other question about widening? Has anything been?
There is no widening of Wadsworth associated with this project.
Tim, does the location of the walk meets the future build-out section of the street as planned at this point in time?
There's a couple areas where there will be some throwaway sidewalk in order to get past some trees, both north and south on this project.
Thank you. Ms. Berry.
One thing Mrs. Turner brought up was discussion of the project, and there wasn't very much in the, you know, public record. But my recollection is this is part of our bicycle trail master plan, and the location of the trail has been part of that plan and was discussed as part of that plan. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions from City Council? We have a motion for approval. It was seconded by Councilmember Reinhardt. Please pull the council on item three.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item four is Resolution fifty-eight dash twenty-ten. Councilmember Reinhardt.
Resolution fifty-eight twenty-ten is a resolution levying general property taxes for the year two thousand and ten to help defray the costs of government for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for the budget year two thousand and eleven. Section thirty-nine dash five, one-twenty-eight of the Colorado Statute requires the Jefferson County Assessor to certify to the city the total valuation assessment of all taxable property located within the territorial limits of the city of Wheat Ridge. The total net assessed valuation for the city for the year two thousand and ten was four hundred and twenty-one million seventy-six thousand and three hundred and ten, which is a decrease of three million three thousand ninety-one and seventy dollars compared to the prior year. The city is also required by the same section of the C.R.S. to officially certify the property tax mill levy to the Jefferson County Board of Commissioners by December fifteenth, two thousand and ten. The city's property tax mill levy remain at one point eight three zero mils for the two thousand and eleven budget, potentially raising seven hundred and seventy thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars in property tax, a decrease of six thousand two hundred and six dollars compared to two thousand and nine. Section twenty of Article ten of the Constitution of Colorado Taxpayer Bill of Rights, TABR, restricts increases in property taxes to the inflation rate plus local growth defined as the percentage of change in the actual value of real property from construction of taxable real property improvements. Wheat Ridge voters exempted the city from this TABR revenue limitation at the November two thousand and six election. However, TABR still restricts the city from raising the property tax mill levy without voter approval unless the mill levy was temporarily reduced in a previous year. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution fifty-eight two thousand and ten, a resolution levying a mill levy of one point eight three zero on the general property taxes for the year two thousand and to help defray the cost of government for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for the two thousand and eleven budget year.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval seconded by Councilmember Stites. Please pull the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. The next item is a public hearing. It's the budget. Resolution fifty-nine dash twenty-ten, I'm going to open the public hearing. And Councilmember Reinhardt.
Resolution fifty-nine twenty thousand and ten is a resolution adopting the city budget and appropriate sums of money for the various funds and spending agency in the amount specified at the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for the year two thousand and eleven.
City Council, tonight I am pleased to present the two thousand and eleven proposed budget. As you all remember, City Council does have a strategic planning exercise on an annual basis. And City Council met both in April and June of this last year to look out to the next five years for the city's strategic focus and identified four specific focus areas. Those are financially sound city, providing quality service, economically viable activity centers, choice of desirable neighborhoods, and more attractive Wheat Ridge. The two thousand and eleven budget was developed with these four focus areas in mind. City Council met on October eighteenth to review the budget with staff. Numerous amendments were received from City Council. All those amendments were included in tonight's budget. Two thousand and eleven budget has been balanced without using the fund balance. Two thousand and eleven budget does include a transfer to the equipment replacement fund of a hundred thousand dollars from the general fund and also includes a transfer to the capital investment program budget in the amount of two point one six five billion dollars from the city's reserves. Direction received last Monday from City Council was to reallocate the three hundred thousand dollar allotment that goes to each council member to divide that into fifteen hundred dollars each for community outreach requests and fifteen hundred dollars each for meetings, trainings, and conferences. Contribution to Wheat Ridge Business District was confirmed to stay at forty thousand dollars for two thousand and eleven. And contribution to Wheat Ridge two thousand and twenty, direction was received to add a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars to the budget. A hundred and six thousand will be used for Wheat Ridge two thousand and twenty buildup business loan and HIP programs and twenty-five thousand dollars for the Community Revitalization Partnership Program. Direction was also received to add five thousand dollars to the budget for the large item pickup program, which the city used to do on an annual basis, but has suspended the last couple of years. City Council direction was received to leave the funding level for the outside agency request at the ten thousand dollar level. And direction was also received from City Council to use the money that was budgeted for merit increases to use that instead for an employee bonus plan in two thousand and eleven, depending on available revenues. To continue to provide a balanced budget, City Council, a few other changes were made to the originally proposed budget. One of those was elimination of an A.C. system for the City Hall I.T. server room in the expenditure amount of seventy-six thousand dollars. We also added a hundred and ten thousand dollars, a hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred dollars in expenditures for two police officer positions. These are grant-funded. We just found out in the last couple of weeks that the city of Wheat Ridge is a recipient of a federal cops grant for two police officers. So, this will be a wash to the budget revenues matching expenditures. But it will increase our F.T.E. level by two police officers for two thousand and eleven. And there are other minor additions and subtractions which enabled us to balance the budget. So, the two thousand and eleven proposed budget, total budget, we're proposing a thirty-four, just over thirty-four million dollars. This includes all funds, the general operating fund, the capital investment program fund, and seven special revenue funds. This is about a five percent increase compared to this year's budget. If we talk specifically about our general fund, which is our operating budget's largest budget, we are looking at about twenty-six million dollars. This is a seven percent increase compared to this year's budget. And the programs in the general fund include several different departments, the police department being the largest, thirty-four percent of the general fund is for police department activities. Parks and Recreation and Public Works are at sixteen percent and seventeen percent. Central Charges is eleven percent. That is mainly general fund employee, health and medical, the city's workers' comp, insurance, property liability insurance, and any charges that go across the city. Administrative Services Department, it's all your internal services for the city, at ten percent. Municipal Court, three percent. General Government, which includes the city manager's office, city treasurer, city clerk, city council, and mayor's office is six percent. And Community Development, which is our building and planning department, at three Revenues, we are projecting about just over twenty-six million in revenues for next year with a beginning fund balance of just over ten million. So, we'll have a total of available funds of close to thirty-seven million dollars at the beginning of next year. The revenues we're projecting are about a two percent increase compared to this year's At the end of two thousand and eleven, we are projecting, based on these revenues and expenditures, of having an ending fund balance of about eight million dollars or twenty-nine percent of expenditures. General Fund revenues are broken down in these major categories. Sales tax is our largest revenue source, about sixty percent. I'd like to point out specifically, the property tax piece of the pie is about three percent. It's not a very large portion of our revenues, as some people may expect. Now, we specifically talk about our capital investment program budget. We are projecting a budget of, proposing a budget of two point nine two million dollars. This is a hundred and forty-three percent increase compared to this year's budget. We had significant budget increases this year, and we are trying to add some of those expenses back next year. So, it is a very large increase compared to this year. Those projects for next year include two million dollars for our annual street preventative maintenance program, seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the Wadsworth Bike Pedestrian Trail, which was just considered by City Council tonight, and six hundred and twenty-four thousand of that is funded by a grant. The rest will be paid for out of city funds. Hundred thousand dollars for contingency development-driven public improvements that may be needed, and forty thousand dollars for the police department evidence climate control system. Revenues for the C.I.P. budgets, with the revenues and the transfer from the general fund and our beginning fund balance, we have about six point five million dollars in total available funds next year. The revenues are a hundred and forty-three percent increase compared to this year. Taking these revenues and expenditures to account, we should have about three point six million dollars at the end of next year. Three point three million of this is reserved for improvements that may be needed or are needed at the I-seventy Thirty-second Avenue interchange for the crossing that Clear Creek The Recreation Center Operation Fund, proposing a budget of two point five million dollars. This is a four percent increase compared to this year's budget. Revenues for the Recreation Center with beginning fund balance, we have about three point eight, three point nine available funds next year, about a nine percent increase compared to this year. And with these expenditures and revenues taken into account, we are projecting about a one point four million dollar fund balance at the end of next year. Open space expenditures, budget of one point five million. This includes maintenance and development projects, also salary for five parks employees. This is a thirty-eight percent decrease compared to this year's budget. Specific projects for open space next year are miscellaneous open space improvements at ten thousand, park miscellaneous park maintenance projects, ten thousand, trail replacement and repair, eight thousand, open space sign fabrication, sixteen thousand, and off-leash dog park, twenty thousand. Also, the continuation, the third phase of our new Discovery Park at Thirty-Eighth and Kipling. We have budgeted just over a million dollars in open space to complete the final phase. Revenues from the open space, with beginning fund balance and revenues, we have about one point five in available funds next year. It's about a forty percent decrease compared to this year's revenues. And we're projecting just over six thousand dollars in the fund balance at the end of next year in the open space budget. Conservation Trust budget, budget of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. This is a seventy-one percent decrease compared to two thousand and ten. That's primarily because there's not as many expenditures in two thousand and eleven for the Discovery Park. So, it's a pretty large decrease. Specific projects out of Conservation Trust budget include transition of the Johnson Park, ten thousand dollars, completion of Discovery Park, a hundred thousand dollars. And some maintenance projects include Richards Heart Estate Playground, new playground, sixty thousand, and resurfacing of tennis and basketball courts throughout the city of a hundred thousand Revenues from the Conservation Trust come from the Colorado Lottery, and we are projecting total available funds next year of about three hundred and fifty thousand. It's a two percent decrease compared to this year's revenues. We're projecting about eighty thousand dollars in the fund balance at the end of next year. Couple miscellaneous funds. We have a crime prevention fund, which we formerly called the Hotel Motel Fund. We have about three hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar budget. This is an eight percent increase compared to this year's budget. Revenues, two hundred and sixty thousand, beginning fund balance, a hundred and thirty-five, total available funds of just under four hundred thousand. It's about a one point six percent decrease compared to this year's budget, projecting to have about thirty-five thousand at the end of next year in fund balance. Couple more minor funds. Equipment Replacement Fund is set up to put funds aside for large equipment replacements. At this point, we've identified two large equipment replacements in the police department. They're both a records management system in our computer aided dispatch system. We are proposing to put an additional hundred thousand in that fund this year, no expenditures. So, we have just over three hundred thousand in that fund. Police Investigation Fund, expenditures of twenty-seven thousand dollars. Our Municipal Court Fund, expenses of forty-two thousand seven hundred. And our Richards Heart Estate Fund, expenses of twenty thousand five hundred. And we move on to our staffing. A little bit of history on staffing, going back to two thousand and eight, we were at two hundred and twenty-two point eight eight F.T.E.s. We are projecting or proposing an increase, as I mentioned earlier in two thousand and eleven, of two F.T.E.s, and these are for two grant-funded police officers. So, for a total of two hundred and twenty-five point seven five five F.T.E.s in all funds. Compensation for employees, we did do a mid-year market analysis for our employees. It did show that increases were necessary to remain competitive at our fifty-fifth and seventieth percentiles. However, that mid-market increase was postponed at this time, which did save the city approximately four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Employees are also eligible for merit step increases throughout the year on their anniversary date based on satisfactory performance. Civilian employees, three point five percent, and sworn employees, anywhere between two point nine and six point two percent. We did receive direction from City Council to use those funds set aside for merit step increases for a bonus program for employees next year based on available revenues. And that's just over a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for that. Our insurance benefits this year, we did realizing a five point five percent increase in our medical insurance. This was down from close to sixteen percent of our original renewal that we received. This includes our three plans with Kaiser HMO or a D.HMO and a multi-choice. We're adding a new equity range so that premiums are based on employee, single employee, an employee plus one dependent, and then a family. It spreads out the premium rates a little more equitable range. To get our increase down to five point five percent, we are increasing the out-of-pocket expenses, including premiums, prescriptions, copays, deductibles, and co-insurance for the employee. And the city and employee are sharing the premium increases. We did receive direction from City Council to leave the budget at ten thousand dollars for our outside agency request, and you should have that in your packet, those agencies that are receiving the funding. We did have a total of thirty-seven thousand dollars in funding requests. We are budgeting ten thousand, and we had two new organizations this year that asked for funding. So, that's the proposed budget for two thousand and eleven. Looking out a few years into the future, based on our current revenue sources and expenditure sources, our revenues are increasing on average about two point four percent, and expenditures unfortunately are increasing at a larger, faster pace. You can see we've done a great job in two thousand and nine, ten, and eleven of keeping expenditures below or equal to revenues. But if revenues and expenditures stay on the same trend in the future, we will continue to realize that gap between, negative gap between expenses and revenues. Then if you add money for capital projects on top of that, the green line represents additional about two point six million a year for capital projects, that gap between our total revenues and expenses is even wider. So, to fill that gap, we have to dip into our general fund fund balance, which will eventually deplete the fund balance. At this point, we're projecting by- At this point, we're projecting by 2013, it will be slightly above zero. So, our long-term revenue picture, we really need to, as the city council and staff, need to address this perpetual revenue expenditure gap. Priorities for 2011 will be evaluation of new revenue sources or valuation of service levels, economic development program, development of a long-term financial sustainability plan, and development of a reserve policy. So, in short, that is the proposed 2011 budget. I will be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one person signed up for item number five. Please step forward and spell your last name for the record.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've got some handouts. Just give them to the city clerk?
Yes, sir. Please spell your last name for the record.
Yes, Bill, Bill Schorer, S-C-H-R-O-E-R. I live at thirty-four sixty-four West Milan Avenue in Sheridan, Colorado. And with the written, I wrote up my comments so I can be brief with my words up here. Please accept the attached recommendations that address fiscal and service opportunities in the recycling, energy, and other fields. I'm a self-employed writer and energy economist. While conducting research on local governments where I live, I discovered issues I think that are critical and crucial to all local governments in metro Denver. And I wanted to visit Wheat Ridge because I think you have the potential for budget savings through energy and water efficiency and waste reduction measures. And my comments are provided in a purely positive framework, but they're also meant to establish a benchmark from this point forward and to get these recommendations on the record. The first one, all municipalities and local governments can adopt perpetual budget missions, goals, and policies that require the cost-effectiveness evaluation of all purchases, whether connected to capital projects, construction, building, maintenance, supplies, et cetera, include a calculation of the money savings produced by the energy and water efficiency qualities of these purchases. This is a kind of language that provides the teeth in your budget policies. And we see a lot of these projects, you know, compact fluorescent bulb projects, and this and that, greenwashing, things are good, but we need to make it perpetual for all your purchases. Then the second one, you know, Wheat Ridge is a progressive city. You have a lot of good advisory committees. Well, get the most you can out of them, empower them, give them five projects to come up with ways to save money while you save energy and water. We have to take that next step. And then I would really want to compliment the city. I'm completely supportive of that two-way on your one provider on your waste. It's about time cities started doing that. The waste haulers, recyclers, that's an unregulated industry. I mean, they're already charging us environmental fees, fuel cost adjustment fees to cover their costs, the environmental costs imposed on them for their operations. Well, what about the ones that they impose on communities? You've already looked at that. They grind up streets, incredible noise, fuel waste, they're smoky. Whether you go to the one provider system or not, make sure that through your franchise fee, you collect the costs that they impose on communities, not a tax, but a fee to cover those costs that they impose. Golden is real, well, Golden has gone to this, and Edgewater has, there's several other cities, but I compliment you on that. That's, that's one way that you can, you know, help your citizens in this time of budget cutting. But more details are in, in the paper I presented. I'll follow up with the city manager, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Before we move on to council questions and discussions, or any other body from the public on item five, move on to council discussions.
Before we start, I had a question for Jerry Dahl. Jerry, there, there's been some discussion about the potentially of deferring the completion of, of the budget to the next session. Does that cause any problems in terms of the public hearing, or what would the process be for picking up or change if we had a different number of people, you know, Tracy's here to do the next hearing? So, if we were to adjourn, what would the process be to pick up next time?
The process would be to move to continue the public hearing on the budget to a date and time certain. That way, the notices that went out for this hearing don't have to be resent because you're in the, you're in a hearing, and you can always, you can always postpone a hearing, or excuse me, continue a hearing to a date certain. And I think we're still well ahead of the state mandated dates, obviously, to get your budgets done and into the, in a department of local government.
And there's no difficulty with not, with the people present not having heard all the testimony, or, or any issues like that?
No, there isn't. The budget's not a quasi judicial matter. Appreciate your asking that, and the fact that the makeup of the council is slightly different. Maybe someone comes, someone else is not there, or they're all there. Everyone is enabled to vote at the continued hearing.
Thank you. That was really, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the budget? Okay, a motion's in order. I want to close the public hearing. Oh, no, I'm not going to close the public hearing. Mr. Dahl?
If he closes the public.
I don't want to close the public hearing depending on the motion.
I would, I would take, I'd take any motions on procedure. And if, if those motions pass, then, then you're done. If a procedural motion to continue the hearing to a date and time certain passes, then you're done. If, if such a procedural motion fails, then it'd be appropriate to close the public hearing and take a motion on the budget itself.
Okay, so I guess we need a motion first on procedure, if we're going to have one.
Is, is there anyone that wants to introduce a motion to continue the?
You know, I personally would like to say continue. November eighth. Tracy can sit in here because I think, I just think it would better for all of us to vote on the budget. Oops. I just, oops. Thinks that, I, I would like to wait till Tracy gets back, and I just think it would look better for all of us to vote on the budget, and, and minus one, I, you know, I just don't like that.
Is that in the form of, you really need to put that in the form of a motion, like, I move to continue the budget hearing until November eighth.
I move to continue the budget hearing until November eighth.
There's a second? We have a motion to continue the budget process, the public hearing to November eighth, seconded by council member Sang. Discussion on the continuation. Ms. Berry?
Prior to this, we had a study session, and Mrs. Langworthy submitted a lot of comments on the budget, and those have been incorporated into the budget. So, I, I think that all her concerns have been incorporated, and she's read it thoroughly. So, I, I don't think we would be doing anything that she isn't aware of tonight.
But we don't know that, and I think commenting on the budget is a heck of a lot different than voting on the budget.
Okay, we have a motion, Ms. Jay.
I think we, we did, more than commenting, we had a consent agreement as to what was, what changes we wanted in, in the budget. So, I feel pretty comfortable that Ms. Langworthy, Ms. Langworthy really had an opportunity to view her opinions and express her, any changes that she desired.
Ms. Sang?
Well, I, my reasoning for postponing it is I would like to wait until after the November the second election, and see what happens with those ballot questions of sixty, sixty-one, and, and one hundred, because that could make, we, we really need to get back to work if that was the case, that they passed.
Mr. Demont?
Although I, I do feel generally comfortable with the budget. I think it would, in all fairness, it would be a good idea to postpone it until Ms. Langworthy is here to vote. I do, I do like having the whole, the whole council. I don't think it's right to assume that we know what she's gonna, how she would vote, being from, we share a district. I'm sure that a lot of people would like, you know, I've, I've had a lot of calls and questions on my half. I don't know if she has or not, so I think it'd be good to wait.
I, I actually think we could move forward, and I don't think it's a problem with Tracy, but I'm going to respect that three other councillors think we should defer, and I will join them in, in supporting the resolution to postpone till, or continue to the next meeting.
Ms. Adams?
With all due respect, I think it's a bad precedent to begin, to do this in case there is absences at the meetings. I have a situation at home that is continually a concern of mine as to whether I can make meetings with an elderly parent. I hope I can be at that meeting, and if I'm not, I guess you guys will have to hold off that meeting and not vote at that time. I intend to be here. We have family obligations. I think we're setting a poor precedent, and I am positive that the best thing to do is to move forward at this point in time. Thank you.
We have a motion to continue the public hearing on the budget to November eighth, was seconded by council member Sang. Please pull the council on the continuation.
Motion carries four to three with council members Berry, Adams, and Jay voting no.
Okay, that concludes our agenda for tonight. We'll move on to city managers' matters.
I have nothing, thank you.
City clerks' matters? Oh, city attorneys' matters, sorry.
No, I don't have anything.
I can put my glasses back on.
It's fine, I'm all set.
Just a reminder, our vote, voters, those of you that have mail-in ballots, please remember to get those ballots in before seven PM on Election Day, November second. You can submit those to the city clerk's office during business hours, as well as on Election Day from seven AM to seven PM. If you're not one that selected to receive a mail-in ballot, you may, you will be voting on Election Day, and if you need information about where to vote, or if you still have questions about your ballot, or whether or not you should be at the polling place, contact the Jefferson County Elections Department at three oh three, two seven one, eight one one one. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Sang?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to thank the staff and, and all those who worked on making a very nice program for us, for the boards and commissions dinner. It was very well turned out, and I believe everybody enjoyed it, and I know I did. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Berry?
Yes, this Thursday is the last chance for you to purchase fresh fruit and produce at the Wheat Ridge Farmers Market. It's been a really successful year. We had quite a few more people visit the market than they did last year. They did some promotional marketing additional, and so we look forward to starting up again next year and, and even expanding it more. And want to thank Liv Well, Wheat Ridge, and others for helping with those efforts this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Demont?
Thank you. I wanted to echo Ms. Sang's gratitude towards everybody about the boards and commissions dinner. I also wanted to kind of address something to Mr. Hill. Thank you for coming in and talking about the trash issue. And I want you to also realize that what's important is that it's, it's when we put it on the ballot to be decided by the voters, that's the important part, that it's on the ballot to be decided by the voters. As you, you know, it, it really, myself, it, it doesn't affect me. I, my house is in homeowners association, and my trash is taken care of through the homeowners association. Be honest with you, I couldn't even tell you what I pay. I don't pay that much attention, but that was my choice to move into a homeowners association, and I realized that when I moved in. And I do see, you know, when we hear about the, the impact it has on the streets, and I had some notes I was going to try to say, but Mr. Schorer came in, and as he commended it, you see if there's, the alternative to some of these problems that come about on it is fees and utilities, as he, he expressed. There's, a lot of these cities do impose a fee or utility to take care of the damage that is done, or the, or the extra pollution that's, that's done, and it's, you know, I, I also own a business in this city, and it doesn't affect businesses either. So, this is just a purely residential, doesn't affect the businesses, and it doesn't affect homeowners association. So, I just want to say I appreciate you coming in, and, you know, I hope we can do more to educate if you have any questions, if you can ask anytime. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Adams?
Nothing, thank you.
How's up, Jay?
Nothing.
Council member Snipe?
Oh, yeah. I was, been, ever since Discovery Park was open, I am extremely pleased with the attendance at that park. It's absolutely fantastic. I mean, when I go to work, well, not when I go to work because it's dark, but if you're out driving by, you, you see a ton of kids out there playing and people walking, so I think it's going to be a tremendous addition to District Three and to the whole city. Now is an excellent time to relocate either your home or business to Wheat Ridge. If you need help, contact one of us or staff. Please do one positive thing this week for either your family, your, your community. With snow coming, you might want to dust off your snow shovels. Ask your neighbors if they will need help. You know, I've seen a lot of neighborhoods go in and buy one snow blower and keep it somewhere and service in the whole neighborhood, and that, and that's a great way. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Reinhardt?
Nothing right now.
Thank you. I just wanted to congratulate Clancy's on their re-grand opening on Friday. They have a new ownership, and it's open, it's at Thirty-Eighth and Kipling, just west of Thirty-Eighth and Kipling, west of Discovery Park, and they have a great turnout, so they're up and running, so please visit Clancy's. Mike is correct. Discovery Park has had huge response, and a lot of young adults and older adults and children at Discovery Park, and the goal is, is to have destination places in the city of Wheat Ridge where people will come and shop, and Wheat Ridge is a destination rather than a pass-through city. So, I want to congratulate the Parks and Rec Department for the work they did on the park, and also want to congratulate Clancy's, so, and also thank our boards and commissions for the work they do for the city of Wheat Ridge. So, we're adjourned.